At 7:32, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Present this evening are council members Burgoyne, Gerbach, Peters, Rhodes, Roth, and myself, Mayor Potem Terhar. Mayor Marl is a little bit under the weather today and not able to be here tonight. Staff present, we have City Manager Campbell, City Clerk Royal, City Superintendent Engineer Ruble, Parks and Recreation Director Scruggs, Public Works Director Fordice, Deputy Treasurer McDonough, Fire Chief Heft, and Police Chief Rinnick. All others present, if you haven't already done so, please take the opportunity to sign in on the table at the back of the room. We have a couple of changes to the agenda. The first is item under Old Business, item number 13-194. We are going to defer to a future meeting. Staff is still working with the City Attorney's Office to clarify some language and details. So this is 13-194 is removed from tonight's agenda. And secondly, in New Business, item 13-199, 2013 Street Projects, there is a typo in the dollar amount. The dollar amount should be $15,395. Are there any other changes for the agenda? Mr. Burgoyne?
Under the Waste Management Contract, 13-198, we received a citizen comment that I'd like to add to that.
We were planning to include it in the citizen comment on Agenda Items portion of the agenda, if that's...
I thought we usually include, if there was an item that came in by mail, we included it in this section.
It's part of, we could do it either way. If Mayor Potem Terhar wanted to read that, essentially being the same if they were here, present, addressing the council during that part of the meeting.
Is that acceptable to everyone?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Anything else? Okay, then, is there a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
So moved. Yes, amended.
Second?
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Roth and seconded by Mr. Peters to approve the agenda as amended. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Motion carries. We now need a motion and a second to excuse the absence of Mayor Marl.
So moved.
Second. It's been moved by Mr. Burgoyne, seconded by Mr. Gerbach, to excuse the absence of Mayor Marl. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And we move to presentations. And the first presentation actually is not listed on the agenda. If I could have Mr. Peters join me out front.
He's going to go to the principal's office.
What kind of trouble am I in?
So as many of you may know, we are regretfully noting this evening that this is Mr. Peters' final council meeting of his term, and we want to thank him for his service to the city as a member of City Council for the past two years, and for his ongoing and energetic service to the city as a member of the Parks and the community, as a member of the Parks Commission, and also the Celtic Festival Committee. We will miss your voice in this body, but certainly look forward to seeing you in the future when you come back to update us on Salt Springs Park. And personally, I'd also like to say, I will miss Mr. Peters. We have joked from time to time about the fact that he sits up on the bench slightly to my right, and I sit slightly to his left, which we've considered symbolically appropriate. I personally very much appreciated the discussions we've had at the times when we disagreed about things, and I've found that those discussions have enriched my thinking, and I hope that they've enriched yours as well. And we have this certificate to present to you, and thank you very much.
Totally unexpected. Thank you very much.
Okay, next, we have Chief Rinnick for the swearing-in of a new sergeant.
Thank you. Mr. Campbell, will you join me in person? Good evening. Tonight's kind of a special night for our police department. Andrew Hartwig began his law enforcement career with us in November of 2001. Andy, if you could come forward, please. He's a graduate of the police corps and earned a bachelor's degree in criminal justice from Michigan State University, and I apparently had to put down "Go Green." He said he'd revolt if I didn't say that. He's the department firearms instructor, field training officer. He's an ALICE instructor, which is Alert, Lock Down, Inform, Counter, and Evacuate. In addition to his law enforcement duty, Andy's a very active family man. He's been affectionately given the nickname of Al in honor of his father, who's a retired Ann Arbor firefighter. Andy's married and he has two sons. If you'd like to introduce your guests tonight?
Oh, yes. My wife Heather is in the back. Yep, she just waved there. On my left is my youngest son Nolan, and then on the far side in the red sweater, that's my oldest son Avery.
And if we could have our City Clerk Terry Royal come down and give the oath of office?
If I could have you raise your right hand, please. Do you solemnly swear or affirm that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of this state, and that you will faithfully perform the duties of the Office of Police Sergeant in and for the City of Celine, County of Washtenaw, and State of Michigan according to the best of your ability?
Yes. All this formal stuff we have to do. certificate. If you'd like to say a couple of words? And we've made it a tradition here to involve family in our promotional ceremonies, and so I'd like Avery and Nolan, if you'd please come up, and what we're going to have them
Well, I'm very proud to be able to accept this promotion, and I'm just very thankful
do is put his collar insignia on for him.
to work in this city. I've always enjoyed the nice community that we all have here, and I look forward to doing my best to keep it a nice, lovely little community that it is. Thank you.
Tradition that we started is what's called the Oath of Honor, and if I could have all law enforcement officers that are in the room, please stand and raise your right hand. Okay, if you'd have a seat? On my honor, state your name.
And Heather, if you'd come forward and remove his officer badge and put on his sergeant's
On my honor, I will never betray my badge. My integrity, my character, or the public trust. I will always have the courage to hold myself and others accountable for our actions.
badge. Thank you. I will always uphold the Constitution and the community I serve. You may be seated, thank you. Mayor Potem, if you've got a few words that you would like to say?
Yes, thank you. Congratulations to you, Sergeant Hartwig. Thank you for your service and your commitment to this community, and on behalf of the entire council, I wish you all the best in this new position and all of the opportunities and challenges it will offer you.
Thank you. Congratulations. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor Potem.
Next, we have a presentation on the Washtenaw Health Initiative. This initiative is an effort that Mayor Marl has worked on and that he strongly supports. Tonight's presentation is introductory and informational for council and also for the community, and this initiative will return to our council agenda for consideration to join at a meeting in January. Our presenter tonight, I believe, is Carrie Rangens.
Thank you. Thanks for having me here tonight. I am Carrie Rangens. I work at the Center for Healthcare Research and Transformation, which is based in Ann Arbor, and is the host organization for the Washtenaw Health Initiative. You should have received some information, general information in your packet about the Washtenaw Health Initiative. I'm here tonight to ask you to sign our charter document, which is included in those materials, and I'll talk a little bit about the benefits of what it means to be a charter member, and I'll tell you a little bit about what the Washtenaw Health Initiative is. The Washtenaw Health Initiative was started in 2010 and officially kicked off in the community in 2011, when people started realizing that there were some changes coming in healthcare, and we wanted to make sure that our county was ahead of the game as far as planning and making sure we were coordinated and not duplicating things or reinventing the wheel that somebody else across the county already made. So although the major federal healthcare law was a big factor of us starting because we wanted to be prepared for it, we actually don't support or oppose the law. So we just want to make sure that whatever's in there, we want to make sure that we're complying with here locally and that we are as efficient as possible in our local community. The Washtenaw Health Initiative focuses on the low-income Medicaid recipients and uninsured people in our community. And I think that you saw draft resolution in your documents, and tomorrow is actually the day where the U.S. Census Bureau releases the numbers at the local, the very small community level, where I can tell you exactly how many uninsured people are in the city of Celine. Of course, it comes out tomorrow, so I can't tell you until then. Some of the benefits that would come to you as a council and as a city here in Celine would be that you would be able to keep tabs of what's going on in the Washtenaw Health Initiative. The charter is a document that is kind of a two-way street. We really want the people who sign the charter, the local organizations, to be able to hear back from us on a regular basis what our accomplishments are and what things we're really doing on the ground in the community. And then we also want to make sure that if there's anything that you need us to know about your community, since you know your community better, that you can report that back to us. Charter members include the major health systems in the community, Chelsea Hospital, and also the VA Health System in Ann Arbor. So it's not just small safety net free clinics, it's also the larger health systems, and also the city of Ann Arbor, Ypsilanti, and the county Board of Commissioners have joined as charter members. For the governmental entities, we don't expect you to have to come, send representatives, and attend all of our many, many, many meetings. We expect more, that we report back to you, and as representatives of your community, that you'll be able to report back to your community. So if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them, since I know that you'll have more time for discussion later.
Are there questions? Mr. Rhodes?
How is it that you, first of all, identify and then contact homeless people?
So there's a few different organizations in Washtenaw County. The Shelter Association is one of the largest. It has a homeless shelter in downtown Ann Arbor, but they also are part of a network that works on homeless issues throughout the community. There are a number of street outreach workers who do go out to various locations where people stay on the streets and work with them one-on-one. There's an intensive program called Frequent Users Systems Engagement. It focuses on people who are homeless, who are also frequent users of the emergency departments, and there's people enrolled in that program. There's caseworkers who go out to them weekly where they are. Usually, they use a cell phone number if they have one, but otherwise, they know how to find through word-of-mouth where folks are. So that's how we typically work with the homeless folks.
If we knew of an individual that we had some concerns about, how do we make contact to see if that person is in your...
If you want, my contact information is in the information you got, and I can leave a card, and I can connect you with people that you would need to talk to.
Okay, thank you.
Are there other questions? Mr. Roth?
I was wondering where your finance comes from besides membership?
So we do have two different kinds of things that are financed. Most of our membership is voluntary, and people who work in the initiative are doing it as part of their regular position. So for those kind of social service agencies, their charter commitment is that they commit their staff time to being part of the Washtenaw Health Initiative. So they staff all of the on-the-ground projects, like the one I was just talking about with the homelessness. I'm the only paid staff member who coordinates all the 150 individual members, and so the funding for my salary and benefits comes from donations from the U of M Health System, St. Joseph Mercy Health System, the county board, city of Ann Arbor, city of Ypsi, and then also Ann Arbor Area Community Foundation and the United Way, and a few individual donations.
Thank you.
Other questions? Mr. Burgoyne?
It shows 209,000 insurance coverage under employee-sponsored, and then direct purchase, 30,000 and so forth, and uninsured, 25,000. So you don't actually provide insurance coverage of any type, you coordinate this, right?
Right. So one of the groups that we have on the initiative focuses on outreach and enrollment for folks. When we first started, we realized that there was a number of uninsured people in the community who actually were eligible for Medicaid already but weren't even enrolled at that point in 2011. So we've been focusing for the last couple of years on trying to reach out to those folks. A number of them were homeless people. And then now, we've shifted focus with this new website, the marketplace going up, trying to help people understand how to use it, because it's really confusing, and also trying to help people understand what it means to be eligible for Medicaid in the future when it does change eligibility rules in the spring. So we have a group that's working with social service agencies to make sure that everybody has the same messaging that they're giving people, just if they need to refer people somewhere, that they can all refer somebody to a big source like the U of M Health System or Sacto, who have a lot of people on staff that can help them enroll in coverage.
Other questions? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Have a good evening.
Next on the agenda, we have a Reinhart Realtor's Status Update on 207 Monroe Street. Mr. Mangan and Ms. Colano, is that correct?
Thank you. I think this is placed high, so we don't have enough action. Thank you. I'm Rick Mangan, and what you have before you are a few papers I'll explain. The first paper is how this property shows in the Realtor Multiple Listing System for Washtenaw County. I'll point out that that information also is shared with regional multiple listing systems for Oakland, Wayne, Lenawee, Livingston counties as well. The next two pages were part of a mailing that we sent out to members of the Washtenaw Builders and Remodelers Council. I can't remember, David, what BRAG stands for exactly.
Builders and remodelers of Greater Ann Arbor.
Many of those members are not builders, but they're all entrepreneurs and offer different kinds of services to builders, remodelers, and so we included a lot of non-builders in that list. There's also some documents, by the way, that on the first sheet that are uploaded, there's a more detailed survey that a person can download, as well as a vacant land disclosure as to what the city knows about the property in question. I think the fourth page, we put up a sign on the property, so it was fortunately a couple months ago, so the ground wasn't frozen. And then the last page has to do with a local marketing event, and I'll let Darby Colano comment on that.
The last page is the hot properties, and what that is, is we can showcase the property for all area agents. It's not just for Reinhardt, it's all agents that are a member of the Ann Arbor Board. So I took the Monroe Street property to this event and presented it, and I did have somebody come up to me after the event that was interested. And this morning, we got a call from the mailing that we did, and we met with another gentleman who's interested. So things have been happening today, how appropriately. So we've got a meeting scheduled, just talked with Todd, and we have somebody that's interested and the other person from the hot properties, so we do have some interest. And, oh, and another builder that, from our office, we had, we also shared this with everyone in our office, of course, and there was an agent that's representing a builder that also expressed some interest. So we do have some things, people that are interested. Are there any questions?
There's people we know about, but there's also people that we don't know about, and I assume that we're getting other people who are paying attention to it as well. There's three that we know about.
Questions? Mr. Burgoyne?
Yeah. The, I think it would be in our interest to get something built there, because that would help densify the downtown, and it would help increase our tax base. It would bring in 15,000 or 20,000 a year once it's built, just to our tax base. I have heard really disparate numbers in terms of asking price and final settling price. We have had a couple of high-end sales in this community, the Reinders Project, the elderly housing, and also the church property right across the street from there. But those really were cases where the buyer had something that was really ready for the purchaser, and I think was towards a high end. Then we've had a builder come in here and say that the price that they wanted to negotiate with the city was 53,000 an acre, so we get kind of like 80,000 an acre and 53,000 an acre. And this property here has a couple of defects to it. It's not square and flat and ready to build. There are some topography issues, and it also has to be cleared. There's a structure on it and so forth, and that's not just a cost, but it's an impediment to getting going. So I'm wondering, I'm thinking that we're asking a lot because we don't want to be sold short, but I'm wondering if we're asking a bit too much, and if we should come more to the middle of the range. I mean, it's like 78,000, 79,000 an acre now, or approximately in that range.
It's probably more than that, Lee, when you think about the...
Structure.
Structure is...
Removal.
It has to be removed.
Yes, yes. So I'm thinking that we're a little bit off the chart, and is it better to our advantage to go sky-high and then negotiate down, or put it to the right price to begin?
You know what, Lee, and that didn't even come up in our conversations yet. So I was pleased with that. It wasn't like, wow, we're interested, but you're really going to have to move on price. We haven't crossed that bridge yet, and we spoke with this gentleman this morning for about an hour, and price didn't come up.
He liked the roll, but...
Oh, good.
Yeah.
He didn't like the shape necessarily, but he liked the roll, and he liked the southern exposure, and he could do the... This is an architect, and he said, quote, "This kind of property gets my juices flowing." So he's going to, he's the kind of guy that can come up with here four different ideas on how to fill the property, and he's thinking residentially, of course, and...
Rick and I were kind of thinking 10 to 14 units, condo units. He liked that idea, and so we just kind of sat down, and he wanted to ask us what was going on in the market and really wanted our input, and he was still very interested.
Well, from our point of view, 10 to 14 units would bring in about 25,000 a year to our tax base, and if we could get something moving there one or two years sooner, it would be to our advantage to accept 25,000 to 50,000 less and get something moving.
Good to know.
I think that's a good thought, and we clearly don't have people lined up at this point, and I think it's an attractive, it's a good time for people to be thinking about, what am I doing, maybe not even next year, but the year after that. So I think this is a good thought that we can come back and revisit price someday, because the data that we based the price on is very thin, as you pointed out. And I've checked with Catherine Skoll, and there's no further data that she's aware of, that we're aware of, in the multiple listing systems. The data that gives us the price that we have is thin. So what is the value? Well, we're going to get that, we'll determine that at some point, or the market will determine that for us, and I think we have to be ready to roll with what we see. Try to do as well as we can for the city, but we're particularly excited about the people that we're talking to thus far. They're thinking about small indoor projects that would be attractive to the area, and we're really close to the west side.
Thanks for your opinion, Mr. Burgoyne. Mr. Rhodes, you had a comment?
Yeah, I just wanted to say that in my opinion, I think this is a marvelous little piece of property. The topography is great, the woods on the backside of it, the fact that it's closer down to...
to our tax base. And if we could get something moving there one or two years sooner, it would be to our advantage to accept 25,000 to 50,000 less and get something moving.
Good to know.
I think that's a good thought. We clearly don't have people lined up at this point. And I think it's an attractive, it's a good time for people to be thinking about, what am I doing, maybe not even next year, but the year after that. So I think this is a good thought that we can come back and revisit price someday because the data that we based the price on is very thin, as you pointed out. And I've checked with Catherine Skoll and there's no further data that she's aware of, that we're aware of, in the Multiple Listing Systems. The data that gives us the price that we have is thin. So what is the value? We're going to get that, we'll determine that at some point, or the market will determine that for us. And I think we have to be ready to roll with what we see. Try to do as well as we can for the city, but we're particularly excited about the people that we're talking to thus far. They're thinking about small indoor properties that would be attractive to the area. And we're really close to the west side.
Thanks for your opinion, Mr. Burgoyne. Mr. Rhodes, you had a comment?
Yeah, I just wanted to say that in my opinion, I think this is a marvelous little piece of property. The topography is great, the woods on the backside of it, the fact that it's close to our downtown. It's the only buildable piece of property that's close to our downtown that I know of. And I think it's very premature to even have any thoughts at all about potential lower than price. I bumped the price up, but no, wouldn't do that. Also, I wanted to congratulate you for making the effort to reach out to potential builders as opposed to just putting it up on the MLS and waiting to see if somebody contacted you. So thank you both for that.
Thank you.
Other comments? Anyone else before we come back to Mr. Burgoyne?
Have you contacted local builders, such as the one that's building on Celine and Arbor Road near Myers, or Peters Building that's local and so forth? Have you actually reached out to them?
Well, we have indirectly. Of course, the mailing went to all of these people. The two of the Realtors that represent Peters are in our office and are cognizant of this. We reached out to the builder that was doing Austin Commons Two, for instance, on the west side.
That's the one that approached me after the meeting, was the agent that represented that builder. So I've been in contact with her, and we've been communicating.
So we're trying to stay out there and stay in touch with people. It's a little like fishing. We've got...
Any other comments or questions? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
And thank you for all your efforts. And thank you, we depend on you to bring your professional expertise to the marketing and pricing of the property.
Thank you.
Thank you. We come now to citizen comments on agenda items. Under the Open Meetings Act, any citizen may come forward at this time and may comment or question on items that appear on this agenda. Comments will be limited to three minutes per person. Anyone who would like to speak is requested, but not required, to state his or her name and address for the record.
I am Mary Hess, 600 Canterbury, and I'm addressing C. 1387, 88, and 89. I noticed in the minutes that there are five members of these commissions that are absent on all of the agendas that are given to you tonight. Next year, you will be picking new boards with the mayor, and I think it's important that attendance is part of the critique. These were very expensive and a lot of money put into the Tifa, EDC, and Lifa. And I know you want to have business people, but an empty chair can do nothing. The other thing is noticing the possible contract for the recreation people, that the residents in the school district, the average household income is $113,000. Now, I wonder what the seniors' average income is. They take up 13% to of the Celine area that uses, could use the rec center. I'm hoping there will be a group offered for seniors because we really, at this age, most of us don't have a family plan. And nobody coming into my age and older has a year membership because we're not sure what next year is. So if there would be something for three months. But I'm hoping you definitely will address the senior part of the rec because it's good for their health, it's good for their well-being all around. Thank you very much also, council, for serving this city so well. I'm going to watch the Lions win. Bye.
Thank you, Mrs. Hess. Are there other comments?
Hi, I'm Gretchen Driscoll. I live at 320 North Ann Arbor Street, and I'm your state representative. I'm here specifically tonight to congratulate Jim Peters on his great service to the city. Jim's been a great volunteer before he was on City Council, and I know you're going to continue to use your energy and enthusiasm for our community even after your service here on the City Council. But I wanted to say thank you. It was also a great pleasure for me to work with you when I was mayor here, and really appreciate your dedication to our community. You're really amazing, and you have these wonderful ideas that somehow you managed to bring to fruition. So you're very determined, so I look forward to lots more new ideas from you down the road. Also, if you have any questions about anything that's going on in Lansing, or how to session, thank goodness, it was a tough week last week. Anyhow, I'm here at your service. My cell phone is 255-2707. If you have any questions, certainly anybody in the public's welcome to call me on my cell if they ever have any questions. And I try to do coffees about once a month in town. So please keep in touch and let me know if there's anything you'd do. And I'll wish you Merry Christmas and Happy Holidays.
Thank you, Gretchen.
Thank you. Are there any other citizen comments? Okay, then we move to the consent agenda. The following consent agenda will normally be adopted without discussion. However, at the request of any citizen or council member, any item may be removed from the consent agenda for council discussion.
Moved to approve as submitted.
Moved by Mr. Rhodes.
Correct.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Girbaugh. We have a, it's been properly moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda as submitted. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We've had a request to move item under New Business, item 13-198, to the first spot under New Business. If there are no objections, we'll go ahead and do that. So this is item 13-198, Waste Management Proposed Contract Extension. Mr. Fordice and Mr. Greve, I believe.
Last meeting, we went over the proposed terms for the Waste Management Contract Extension, and I presented those to you tonight in a summary memo. And if you'd like, I can go over the proposed changes again or just open it up to questions?
Would we like a summary of the proposed changes again? No? Everyone's okay? Then we're open for questions and comments. Yes, I forgot. I apologize. So we have a citizen comment on this. I'm sorry. This was supposed to be under public, citizen comments. This is from Gordon Peters of Celine River Drive, Karen and Gordon Peters. "We are residents of Celine River Drive and have two concerns about the proposed Waste Management Contract that will be voted on at tonight's City Council Meeting. Unfortunately, we're unable to attend, but would appreciate it if you could raise our concerns prior to tonight's vote on the contract. First, we are concerned that the 96-gallon recycled containers will increase the propensity for homeowners to store these containers outside of their garages. We already have homeowners in our neighborhood that are not in compliance with the current ordinance that states that garbage containers should not be stored outside. Secondly, we are concerned about the new contract allowing homeowners to place out one bulk item free of charge each week. Right now, we have offenders in our neighborhood that set items out to their curbs at the beginning of the week, in spite of the fact that the ordinance states that items should not be placed out prior to 4:00 PM the day before garbage pickup. We don't look forward to seeing our neighborhood slash city littered with more of these bulk items. We have no problems with both of these proposed changes, as long as enforcement of our existing ordinances will occur for those that continue to not follow the rules. I know that you plan to distribute educational materials prior to the implementation of the new contract, so I'm asking that the concerns outlined regarding our existing ordinance could perhaps be included in those materials as a reminder to folks." Mr. Burgoyne.
Well, first, I'd like to verify from either Gary or Jeff, were the codes cited properly? Is it illegal to have the container outside? And must the item only be 4:00 PM or later the day before on the bulk item? What is our local codes and ordinances? Is this correct?
Yeah, just prior to the meeting, Gary and I quickly looked through the code to confirm. And the 4:00 PM is correct. That's what our current solid waste ordinance says, that containers should not go out till 4:00 PM the day prior to pickup, and that they should be removed from the street the day of pickup.
Well, they were referring to the bulk item.
And that would apply to the bulk items as well.
To the bulk item also. And the second issue was, can you have your container outside? And if you have it outside, does it have to be in the side yard or screened or whatever? Are there any requirements?
There are requirements on yard use, and front yards are for essentially ornamental purposes only. So landscaping, architectural elements, walkways, driveways. But storage in the front yard is not permitted. So what we quickly looked at here would say that you can store it in a side yard, as long as you're not on a corner lot.
Can it be visible from the street?
Yeah, if it's in the side yard.
It may be.
Yeah.
Okay.
So.
So that was not precisely correct on that part.
Right.
Okay.
Are there other questions? Mr. Rhodes.
Not a question specifically, but I have received several comments from various residents since our last council meeting. This came out to the public, and they were all very favorable and were appreciative of the idea of having larger recycling containers so that they didn't have to struggle with a couple of them, with hand carrying them. They liked the idea of the wheeled carts. And the issue of the every other week did not enter into the conversations.
Other comments or questions?
Just mayor, for example.
Yes.
Just saying, similar to, I did a similar type of survey with individuals on Facebook, and they had the same approach, that most of them felt that this was a good approach and didn't see an issue with us changing to it. They appreciated the idea of having things being able to be picked up once a week, the bulk items. So that's kind of like what it used to do. So at least they had that option now.
Right. And I would suggest with that one comment that came in, that the bulk item pickup, I think overall is going to make the city cleaner looking because right now, we have a small but existing problem of people putting out large items that are not eligible for pickup and haven't prearranged for a large item pickup. So those end up sitting there for at least a week before pickup. So with this program, hopefully they'll put them out at the proper time, and then they'll be picked up promptly.
I will also add, I also put this out on Facebook for reaction. Some concerns came up, there was one question about, will there be the opportunity for people to opt out of the 96-gallon and keep their small containers? So that's a question. And then there were also, there was also a comment about the excessive use of plastic in the production of the 96-gallon container, that we're producing even more plastic in our environment. That was a concern, not really a question, but just a comment. So do you have an answer about this opting out of the...
Yeah, the...
Carts.
I'm going to defer to Patrick on that a little bit, but I think the efficiencies we hope to gain in the system could be easily defeated by a lot of the 18-gallon bins still out there. So I think the great, it really only works if it's pretty nearly 100%.
Correct. The goal is to move the carts and get out of these...
Okay, thanks for that clarification. The other thing I did on Facebook was, since I have a number of friends who live in Ann Arbor, asked them, since they have now quite a bit of experience with larger containers, and everyone who commented from Ann Arbor said they loved them. So that was very positive, too. And most of the response was positive that I got from Celine as well.
And the carts themselves are recyclable, so even though we're using plastic for them, at the end of their life, they can be recycled.
All right, thank you. Mr. Burgoyne.
One other comment in this letter to the council was about enforcement in case people didn't put out their goods at the right time, the bulk item at the right time. I don't know what we do now if somebody puts out a bulk item at the wrong time or not properly paid, doesn't have the sticker and so forth.
Right. It's very much a case-by-case basis, you know, whether anybody on staff observes it, whether any citizens call in to complain about it. It's certainly not an item that we go out looking for. We don't have the resources to do that.
Mr. Girbaugh.
Well, we do have our new C Click Fix, so if citizens want to report something or whatever, they'll have that opportunity to do that.
Yeah, another avenue to report those concerns.
There's nothing further? This will be a motion to approve or not approve a five-year extension to the city's contract with Waste Management for solid waste and recycling services with no increase in rates for the first year and CPI-based increases in subsequent years to authorize the changes to the services provided as detailed in the December 11, 2013 memorandum from Director of Public Works Fordice, and to authorize the mayor and city clerk to execute the consolidated contract document following review and approval by the city attorney. Is there a motion?
So move.
Moved by Mr. Roth.
Approve and support.
To approve?
Yes, to approve.
To approve? And supported by Mr. Rhodes. Any further discussion? Yes, Mr. Girbaugh.
I forgot, is there a cap on, is it always CPI or is there a cap?
There's a 4% cap.
Thank you.
Any other questions? There are no further questions? It has been moved and seconded to approve. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much.
Thank you, folks. Pat Greavy from Waste Management. I appreciate your consideration. We look forward to bringing you this new program and to continuing our partnership. I'm not going to go home and watch the Lions yet. I'm going to try to make yet another council meeting tonight, so I also appreciate the consideration on my placement on the agenda. Merry Christmas and Happy Holidays to you folks.
Okay, thanks very much. Thanks for being here tonight. Okay, we move then to item 13-193, Recreation Center Marketing Campaign. This will be a motion to acknowledge receipt of the memo dated December 10, 2013, from Parks and Recreation Director Scruggs, and to approve and authorize or not approve the Gen Motion Marketing LLC contract for an amount not to exceed $7,500.
Move to approve and authorize the $7,500?
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved by Mr. Burgoyne, seconded by Mr. Peters. Ms. Scruggs.
Thank you. Trying not to touch that too much. In November, late November, we sent out nine requests for proposals to area marketing firms. We received several people that declined to bid on this. They were extremely busy at that time. Several we didn't receive bids back on, and we did receive two, and they happened to be two marketing firms from here in Celine. And after receiving the bids, we, I met with them personally to review their proposals and what the expectations were and the deliverables. And after reviewing these, I am recommending that we go with Gen Motion. I believe that their strategy and what their deliverables are in line with what we need in order to really have an excellent marketing effort to promote all of the new changes that we have going on, beginning the first part of January. The $7,500 figure is a not-to-exceed figure. Their hourly rate is $75 per hour, so essentially they're bidding 100 hours' worth of work. This was desirable to us because I think there's a lot of work that we need to do internally with our staff and with the message that we're sending out to our current members and to future members. And the $7,500, the creative part of the marketing plan is something that would be funded through our, excuse me, looking for the word, our fund balance. Sorry about that. And currently in our budget, we have more than $5,000 or $6,000 already budgeted for, earmarked for marketing. So the actual printing, postage, distribution of the materials that they designed will be already planned for regarding our budget. And I'm open to whatever questions you might have.
Mr. Rhodes.
Thanks, Carl. I noticed on page seven of their proposal, where they talk about how they're going to get this information out. I'm sure it's got to be an error in there because in their item two, about under social media, it references Celine Patch, and that entity is, for all practical purposes, almost nonexistent in our community. That's not going to work with Patch.
Right. We still use the blogs on Patch. I think a lot of people are not necessarily going to that like they used to. A lot more people are moving towards the Heritage and the Post. So that's what we'd be focusing on.
I did want to make sure that those two entities were contained in whatever...
I did wanna make sure that those two entities were contained in whatever proposal we end up, contract we end up signing with these folks-
Sure.
-because, you know, they're here and they're there-
Absolutely. And, and I worked personally with both of these people, trying to get the information out, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions or comments? Mr. Gearbuck?
Just knowing that this did go out for RFP and that we're not going with the lesser of the two bids that you recommended, what's the clear distinction between JC and Design Hub that you see was lacking?
Well, actually, money-wise, we're getting more of a value by going with Gen Motion. The, the hourly rate for our other Design Hub was $100 per hour. And I, the, the proposal that Gen Motion put together is, was very detailed, very strategy-oriented, really targeted exactly what we were looking for, and helping us work on not only like mailers and distribution, but member benefits flyers, talking points on social media, working with our, our local media to get the word out. So they, I felt they, they had a very, very focused strategy, and the, the Design Hub's proposal, although I've worked with them quite frequently, I, I felt it was a little bit vague, wasn't as, didn't have what we were looking for.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Roth?
Be Celine package was put together for the community to use, also basically the city, the schools, and everybody. This group put that proposal, that package together for us. Why can't the rec center use that without having to pay for it again?
The promote-
And just, just cut it down and have them design a brochure and a postcard, and the rest of the stuff should be there for us to use.
You, you're correct, the promote Celine package that they put together, a lot of the information is, is available to us, and we will be using and utilizing that, but that goes a little bit beyond, what we're looking for is more focused strictly on rec center, rec center members, recruiting members, trying to get the word out to our school district. But parts of what they have in, for the Be Celine tool, or promote Celine toolkit can be utilized.
I look at that, and they, if we would use it, or you would use it, that should really be a cost savings, so they'd be zeroing right in for their mailing materials that you're gonna be sending out.
Correct.
So that should be a good cost savings, otherwise you kinda wonder why we did the first.
Right, well, and, and like I said, this is a not-to-exceed number, if, if we get our meetings and we're, we're, you know, concise and we can really target and, and get after this, we might not necessarily use the whole 7,500. So we're, we're pretty, we're good at pinching pennies.
Other comments or questions? Okay, it has been properly moved and by Mr. Burgoyne and seconded by Mr. Peters to approve and authorize. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Move now to item 13-199, 2013 Street Projects Final Payment. This will be a motion to acknowledge receipt of the memo dated December 4, 2013, from City Superintendent Engineer Rubel, and to approve or not approve the recommended project closeout and final payment in the amount of $15,395 as submitted. Is there a motion?
Move to approve.
Moved by Mr. Rhodes, is there a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Gearbuck. Mr. Rubel?
Thank you, Mayor Fortem. Just to wrap up the project here, you can see by the, the total cost of the project, we came very close to the award of the contract, so final costs are within .27%, so it's quite on target, and we are within budget also. The examples of the work stages are, are attached in the color photos, it shows each of the, the six major phases of work performed by Barrett Paving as the major contractor, Andrews, Mike Andrews Company did the structures and the concrete, Road Fabrics Inc. did the interlayer, the woven fabric interlayer, which is the first time we've used this on our street, but these were prime candidates for that. And, and then Barrett Paving, of course, did the milling, I mean, did the paving of the level and top courses. And then the painting contractor was PK, and the sign contractor was Poco, everybody performed really well, we kept everything well-coordinated, on schedule, and we received a number of favorable compliments from especially the residents on, on Celine River Drive, who were very happy after several years of waiting, you know, to get on the list, as some of the delay was due to the economics, of course, the economy and lack of funds, but they were very, very happy to get their street mill and resurfaced.
Are there any questions or comments for Mr.?
Just a quick one.
Yes, Mr. Peters?
This is our first geotek fabric road in Celine?
Correct.
Have they been used in Ann Arbor someplace before?
Uh, it's, it's been used several places throughout the state, it's fairly common in the industry now, where you need to reinforce the mat where you don't do full-depth asphalt, it also forms a vapor barrier, so that when it does crack, you don't get the permeation of water through there, and then the frost heave, and then the cracks and potholes, so it has a, a way of binding the fabric together and keeping it also intact from a lot of moisture damage.
Thanks for putting that together, because I hope that's successful, we can use it more often.
Thank you.
Mr. Burgoyne?
Yeah, I would just like to reiterate that staff and contractor did a great job, and the citizens appreciated it, I could see that. I'm wondering, what is that layer made of?
The geotextile?
Yeah.
It's a, it's a, it's a petroleum product, you know, and, you know, like-
Polypropylene.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
HDP and some other reinforcing materials. They make three or four different kinds, different textures for different applications.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Rubel, for this outline, and thanks also for describing the cost avoidance by city staff work, that was useful to see as well. If there are no further comments or questions, it has been properly moved and seconded, moved by Mr. Rhodes and seconded by Mr. Gearbuck to approve. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries unanimously. Move now to item 13-200, Fire Prevention Amendments. This will be a motion to acknowledge the receipt of the memo dated December 6, 2013, from Fire Chief Heft, and to approve or not approve the recommended changes to Chapter 42, Article 2, and Sections 34 through 52, 34-52 through 34-56 of the Celine Code of Ordinances as submitted. Is there a motion?
Move to approve.
Moved by Mr. Burgoyne?
Second.
Second by Mr. Peters. Chief Heft?
Thank you, good evening. I'd like, if I could, start by thanking Mr. Peters for his service to, not only the city, but to, he served on the fire board, so it's been a pleasure, good luck to you. Also, I guess, I, I don't really have an exciting story to tell you about the, the fire code, but I can tell you that it's, it's kind of, it's morphed from what it was into the International Fire Code that we're going to amend. For decades, there was three or four building codes throughout the country that were kinda regional, east, midwest, south, and so finally in the 90s, somebody got wise and decided maybe we could come up with something that would be good for everybody, so that we can standardize everything. So, the International Code came to be, and that was probably late 90s, and in 2000, they came up with the International Fire Code, I think they have a, a International Plumbing Code, Mechanical Code, all those things. So, everybody that has a code now, for instance, in the city of Celine, we use the Michigan Building Code, everything references the International Fire Code, which makes everything easier for everybody, including the trades when they need to do their specking and that kinda thing. So we're all on the same page, using the same code. So, Mr. Campbell made an appointment for me with your attorney, and I wanna say that I was very impressed, in fact, I hardly got the words out of my mouth, and he knew exactly what he had to do with the code, and the same with the tech, tech rescue, adding that as a cost recovery, he knew, he had done that in many communities, so all this went very, very smooth. I'm not sure what you wanna talk about on the fire code, I mean, there's not many things that, I mean, we could, it's a big book, so I'm not sure what to tell you about that, but it's definitely the way we need to go. The, the cost recovery, I would say, for those that don't know, in Washtenaw County, we have a Hazardous Materials Response Authority, which includes all of the fire departments in Washtenaw County, and each, each fire department has to have members and pay dues according to the size of your population. But what that does for you is it allows you to have a full response, whether you're the city of Ann Arbor or the city of Celine, you get the same tools. So what we've done in the county since, I believe it was Katrina is when all this started, they came up with technical rescue teams, and there was funding from the federal government to, to build these teams. So we mirrored the hazmat team to create this, and, you know, it's used for trench rescues, which we actually had a training here in the city, yes, thank Mr. Campbell for that too, we were able to, to go out into the industrial park and, and work on that. It works for building collapse, high-angle rescue, numerous things, so it's another great program, but there's always that thing that if you use them, we need to bill somebody, so we needed to add this. That's it, I guess.
Are there any questions? Questions for Chief Heft?
Just a comment.
Mr. Peters?
Thanks for your hard work on this, there's a lot in here that really helps bring Celine into line with the rest of the other surrounding communities, so that's, that's a benefit.
Exactly, exactly, and we should probably make a note for the record so we fix it, could you tell them that item that you found that we had the-
Spell check. Instead of saying, we were talking about killing, kindling fires and recognizing different wildfires and dangerous diseases, and it's supposed to say pests, instead we said pets.
So we don't wanna do anything to the pets.
Being a dog lover, that jumped right out.
So we'll have to make sure the attorney sees that too when we, when we write that section.
Thanks, great document.
Are there any other questions or spell check additions? Okay, thank you very much, Chief Heft, and thanks for your hard work on this.
Merry Christmas.
There are no further comments or questions? It has been moved by Mr. Burgoyne, seconded by Mr. Peters, to approve. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Move now to item 13-201, Historic Preservation Grant, Rentschler Farm. This will be a motion to acknowledge receipt of the December 12, 2013 memo from Public Works Director Fordice, and to approve or not approve the resolution reserving $29,120 as the city's 40% match to the State Historic Preservation Office grant for the Rentschler Farm barn roofs and for structural repairs to the salvage barn, and to authorize City Manager Campbell to sign the necessary application and documentation required for this grant application. Is there a motion?
Move to approve.
Moved by Mr. Rhodes, is there a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Roth. Mr. Fordice?
Hello again. This is a grant for certified local governments, which the city of Celine has been for, I think, 14 years now, and they offer two different types of grants, one is geared towards planning and, and studies of historic properties, and then another one is for more brick-and-mortar type projects. And those funds are limited to structures that are listed in the National Register of Historic Places, which Rentschler Farm recently was, received that distinction. So there's a few items that need attention at the farm. The roofs on both barns are deteriorating, salvage barn, much more so, that one is actually leaking right now, and, and the, the big barn, every time we have a windy day, a couple of shingles fly off. So both of those roofs need attention, and when this grant opportunity came along and I was considering applying for those items, I, about six years ago, we did an amount of, a great amount of structural work in the big barn, and figured we should take a look at the salvage barn also, so brought out a barn restoration expert who did the work in the big barn, and we identified a cracked beam, a fully broken beam, and several posts that have a variety of problems at the bottom, and, and kind of an overall lean to the structure that, that all really need to be corrected. So all those items together, the, the two roofs and the structural repairs, comes up to a almost $73,000 project, and would like to utilize the, the federal funds if we can get this grant.
Are there questions for Mr. Fordice?
I just wanna make a comment.
Yes, Mr. Roth?
The comment is that we have the museum, we have the buildings audited, it'd be a shame to let the buildings fall to pieces for us, so I think this is necessary improvements.
Yes, yes.
To preserve what we have.
Right, and we have, over the past six or seven years, done a substantial amount of work on, on the structures there, the window work and roof work on the house, painting the house, the structural repairs in the, the big barn, painting the big barn. I feel like I'm missing something.
Foundation of the big barn?
Foundation of the big barn, yep. So continuing in that, that trend, because I believe for the first 15 or 20 years of ownership, there wasn't a heck of a lot done, so.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Fordice, and, and thank you for your ongoing alertness about grant opportunities to get projects done for us. If there are, if there's no further discussion, it's been moved by Mr. Rhodes and seconded by Mr. Roth to approve. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries unanimously. Move now to item 13-202, Historic Preservation Grant, Oakwood Cemetery. This will be a motion to acknowledge receipt of the December 12, 2013 memo from Public Works Director Fordice, and to approve or not approve the resolution reserving $6,400 as the city's 40% match to the State Historic Preservation Office grant for the Oakwood Cemetery mausoleum windows restoration, and to authorize City Manager Campbell to sign the necessary application and documentation required for this grant application. Is there a motion?
Move to approve and authorize.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Gearbuck, seconded by Mr. Burgoyne. Mr. Fordice?
This is a project that came out of recent meetings of the Oakwood Cemetery Task Force, one of the, the mausoleum has several needs in terms of some renovation and repair work, and the four stained glass windows are one of those projects, and in discussing potential items with the State Historic Preservation Office that might be eligible for this grant, this one came up and they seemed kinda excited about it. And last year, they had, they didn't have very many applications, and actually, I think all of the money went to one community, who happened to toss in two applications, so what the heck, as long as I'm doing this, and throwing two applications, and this is a, you know, this is a project that's already been approved by the task force, council had reviewed it and wanted, there's a typo there, it says, should be RFPs instead of FRPs, but, you know, wanted staff to proceed with the project. I do have a quote, it's a couple of years old now, from a, a historic preservation expert for this work, and based the grant amount on that. I think it's, it's a worthy- I think it's, it's a worthy, a worthy project. The, the windows themselves, they're, they're quite beautiful and they're, you know, they're almost a hundred years old and the hundred year anniversary of the mausoleum is coming up. The glass is all in great shape. The stuff that holds it together over the course of a hundred years, gravity kind of misshapes it and then the, the framework around is pretty much shot. So getting in there and getting this before those pieces of glass fall out of the, the caimes would be, would be good timing and give them another hundred years of, of good service.
Okay, thank you. Are there questions or comments for Mr. Fordice? Yes, Mr. Rhodes.
Mr. Fordice, could you identify what this bottom picture is showing? Appears to be the corner of something.
There's, the, the exact details of the, the framing around the glass is, is not a hundred percent clear. I think there's a, a wood frame with a metal, kind of a casing over that. And then on top of that, there's a piece of plexiglass. So that, that screw with the washer around it, that's holding the protective plexiglass into rusted metal. And then underneath that is, is a wood frame. So that's kind of a corner, there's a very detailed shot of one corner of one of the windows.
Okay, thank you.
Are there other questions or comments? Yes, Mr. Peters.
They really are beautiful windows. It's nice we take your time, but to save them. We had a citizen earlier asking about the shelving in the mausoleum. So if you have a couple of bucks left over for the windows, maybe you could take a look at some of the shelving.
The shelving has, has been an ongoing problem. We've, I think now had three marble experts looking at it and decline to work on it. So, you know, trying to find other folks to come in and, and make those repairs.
Thanks.
Other questions or comments? Okay, thank you, Mr. Fordice, and once again, thank you for your ongoing vigilance for grant opportunities. Okay, it has been moved by Mr. Gearbach and seconded by Mr. Burgoyne, Mr. Burgoyne, to approve. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
While they're opposed, say nay. Motion carries unanimously. Move now to item thirteen dash two zero three, Cafeteria Plan. This will be a motion to acknowledge receipt of the December twelve, twenty thirteen memo from City Manager Campbell and to approve and adopt or not approve amendment, amendment number one to the City of Celine Cafeteria Plan to eliminate the grace period from the plan and allow for the implementation of the flexible spending account carryover provision for the twenty thirteen plan year going forward and to authorize or not authorize City Manager Campbell to sign the necessary documentation required for this amendment. Is there a motion?
Move to approve and adapt and to authorize.
Moved by Mr. Gearbach. Is there a second?
Second.
Second is by Mr. Rhodes. Mr. Campbell.
Thank you, Madam Mayor Protem. Trying to make this brief so those that want to get out to the lines game can. So through IRS rules, the city's established cafeteria plan allows employees to set aside pre-tax from their paycheck to, to pay for additional costs, potentially, for instance, that are either not covered by insurance or maybe not covered all the way. So those are pre-tax dollars in their flexible spending account. And as it says in, in the plan, previous IRS rules allowed for a grace period because essentially if you don't use, so we'll say, for example, somebody set aside a thousand dollars. The max the IRS allows is an annual amount of twenty-five hundred dollars and an organization can set anything up to that or below it. The city's established level is two thousand dollars. And so that, that would remain the same. But, so if you put in a thousand dollars at the end of December, and this is a calendar year, end of December, say you had five hundred dollars left over, it's a use or lose it. So the, the grace period gives you two and a half months after the end of the year to spend that money. But if there's anything still unspent, then you would lose it. So it's, it's a good, you know, it's a, it's a good tool, but again, if, if you don't accrue those costs, then you're losing that money. Then a recent new law by, new rule issued by IRS is this carryover provision where you can carry over up to five hundred dollars. So if you don't spend, so in this case, you only spent five hundred of the thousand, you could roll it over to the next year and you could actually reach twenty-five hundred dollars, even though ours is still two thousand, two thousand in a given year that would be taken out of your paycheck. However, IRS says either or, you can't do both. And so we presented this at, at the annual open enrollment meetings with employees with this proposal. So that, that's what hopefully, again, as council considers this, that's what staff is recommending is to, to take the first step in this is to delete the grace period from the current plan. And then as my memo states, again, working with Capnic, our third party healthcare administrator, they will provide us language, I believe, towards mid-year that would actually come back to fully amend for, to offer the carryover. But by deleting that, that allows employees to take advantage of the, the carryover provision for this coming beginning that they could roll over from this current year that we're in, two thousand thirteen, could roll it over up to the five hundred dollars to, to their account for next year.
Thank you, Mr. Campbell. Are there questions or comments for Mr. Campbell? Hearing none. It's been moved by Mr. Gearbach and seconded by Mr. Rhodes to approve and adopt and to authorize. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries unanimously. Move now to discussion portion of the agenda. First, are there commission, committee or task force reports from council members? Mr. Gearbach.
Just real quick, regarding the absentees at the last EDC and Tifa meetings and such, that was the Monday preceding Thanksgiving and a number of people were out of town. So we were trying to get a quorum and get the information inbound. So I wanted to let everyone know that that was more the reason why people weren't able to attend that meeting. Also, the planning commission this week met and discussed about one forty-seven and felt that there is some benefit to looking and reexamining the D one, D two zoning of that area. But after a little additional investigation, considering that it isn't just one lot, there's multiple lots there and some other things, we'll have to do a little more homework to see what we want to do to proceed. But I think the majority of everyone was agreeing that that's something that we need to look at and we'll determine what would be best for that area.
Okay, thank you. Other reports. Mr. Peters.
Just real quick for the Parks Commission, just want to say a quick thank you to Mark Taylor, who will be resigning after three years of service at the city on the Parks Commission. Mark was a good guy to work with. He was always ready to take on jobs and he was a great asset to the committee. So to Mr. Taylor, I'd like to say, well done. Thank you.
Other reports. I will just note, it's been noted earlier this evening by a member of the, of the community that new appointments will be being made in January to committees and commissions for the city. Anyone who is interested in a committee or commission appointment should check the city website and look for the application information and get in touch with Mayor Morrow. Other reports or announcements? We have been notified that the Third Annual Chili Wars will take place on Saturday, March first, twenty fourteen, from eleven thirty a.m. to one thirty p.m. and we look forward to having further information about that event at a future meeting. Any other discussion items? Okay. Then we move to public comment. Under the Open Meetings Act, any citizen may come forward at this time and make comment or question to city council. This public comment period will be limited to three minutes per person. Anyone who would like to speak is requested but not required to state his or her name or, and address for the record. Are there any public comments? Thank you. Is there any other business to come before the Celine City Council? Mr. Peters.
Just one quick thing. A lot of people thanked me tonight about being a city councilman, but it's me who should say thank you to all of you. You've got a terrific city here. When you look at all the good folks that attend these meetings on a regular basis and all of the city employees and all my colleagues, colleagues up and down this bench, it's no wonder that the city of Celine gets awards like, you know, best place to raise a child and best one hundred places to live because they've got a great team here. They're dedicated and they work hard and it's been my pleasure serving with these folks for two and a half years. I'm going to miss them all, so thanks again.
And thank you again, Mr. Peters. Mr. Rhodes.
Along those same lines, I also wanted to thank Jim Peters for his service on council and Parks Commission and all the other things that you do in our community. You know, the, the kind of an individual that you are exemplifies what makes Celine such a great community. And it's been my great pleasure to work with you and I look forward to continuing to work with you on other things.
Likewise, Dave. Thank you.
I think Mr. Rhodes speaks for all of us. Upcoming meetings of city council, our next meeting will be January sixth, twenty fourteen, regular meeting at seven thirty p.m. and then on January thirteenth, twenty fourteen, work meeting at six p.m. and regular meeting at seven thirty p.m. And at, at this time, I invite Mr. Peters to move that this meeting be adjourned at eight fifty-two p.m.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. This meeting is adjourned.